Time to start. We do have supervisors, Zerflue is joining us electronically this morning, virtually. So you will hear or see him in that manner. We will call the July meeting of the Wood County Board of Supervisors to order. The clerk has taken the role. I believe everybody has signed in.
Yes.
And for the invocation, I will call on our county clerk, Trent Leiner. Trent, if you would come forward. I ask that you please rise and then remain standing. It is on. If you would, please bow your heads with me if you are so inclined. Our gracious heavenly Father, our nation has just celebrated 246 years of freedom. As we move into the 247th year, we humbly ask for your blessings as we continue what has been described as a great American experiment. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our county board, asking that you would graciously grant them the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, and the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Please give them an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who reside in our little corner of the world. We ask this in your name. Amen. Please join the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Trent. The invocation. And welcome to any visitors that we have here today. First order of business is to take the action on the minutes of the previous session. I have a motion by Hamilton. I have a second by Lightnum. The minutes, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approval, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and at motion carries. We have no excusals today. We have no resignations today. And then, without objection.
I think I'm doing me.
I thought it was me. Without objection, we'll take those appointments together. Does anybody object to running all those appointments together? All right. So for our appointments or reappointments to the Wood County CDBG Housing Committee, Ken Curry, North Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, Jason Grunberg, Anthony Wood County Wildlife Advisory Committee for three-year terms, Leo Kudrowski, Scott McColley, and Mike Whitley. Again, Supervisor Lightnum with a motion, Supervisor LaFontaine with a second. Any discussion? Again, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and at motion carries. Do we have any public comment today? Any public comment? I don't see any public comment today. So, under acknowledgements and recognitions, I'm going to take this a little bit out of order. This was very nice. I received, last month, we honored the life of Supervisor Louis Rosendick, who passed away. And we do that far too often. But I typically don't receive a note like this. I received a long letter, actually, with the note that Libby Rosendick, Louis' wife, asked me to share with the board. And it says this. "To all the Wood County Board members, what a wonderful surprise to receive the county board resolution honoring Louis' service to Wood County. On behalf of the entire Rosendick family, thank you so much for the tribute to him." Louis always said that his work with the county board was of supreme importance, and it was a sincere thank you. And I thought I would relay that to the board. It was greatly appreciated, and she couldn't have been more thankful. So I thought I'd share that. We have no other acknowledgements and recognitions. We are not going to have a special order of business today for Park and Forestry, their annual report. The director is a little under the weather today, and we're going to push that off till next month, or the following month, if there's not time already available then. Trent, is there time available next month?
There isn't.
Okay, we'll probably move that way. All right. So moving into the packet. On page six, you have referrals for July, and all of the resolutions that went to the WCA had to be in already. Supervisor Clendenning, when is the resolution and laws committee meeting?
The sixth.
The sixth of August? So any of those resolutions that were forwarded to the WCA will be acting on August 6th. Supervisor Clendenning is right. I'm not sure. He's on the committee, so I thought he might have that in the calendar right there.
The resolutions committee is on the eighth.
On the eighth, okay. On the eighth. All right. Then moving forward into the packet, page seven, Operations Committee, pages seven, eight, and nine, their meeting of Tuesday, July 12th. Beginning on page 11, we have the monthly update from the Human Resources Committee, 11 through 15. 11 through 15. Monthly letter comments from the Treasurer's Office on 16. Employee Wellness on 17. And then that brings us to the first resolution in the packet brought forth by the Operations Committee.
This will be Resolution 22-7-1, to approve the Wood County core values and merit pay procedure. Fiscal note, none. Merit pay is already budgeted for in the Human Resources budget.
All right. So you have the resolution on page 18, accompanying documentation, 19 through 24. I had a motion by Bragg, a second by Hamilton. Discussion. Discussion. All right. Seeing none, I would ask you to please vote. Supervisor Zerflue?
Aye.
Thank you. And that resolution passes unanimously. All right. Moving forward in the packet, we're on page 25. Page 25. And that's the Wood County Human Services Department, the minutes of their public hearing on June 24th. Move into their meeting from June 23rd on pages 26 and 27. Monthly update from the Health Department, beginning on 28, and that runs through page 32. Page 33 is nothing more than the attendance sheet for the public hearing. Beginning on page 34 is the Wood County Human Services Monthly Report, beginning with the Director of Rulings, and that's 34 to 41. Page 34 to 41. The CVSO Veteran Service Officers Report on 42 and 43. And then that brings us to a resolution on page 44 in your packet. I ask the clerk to please read the resolution.
This will be Resolution 22-7-2, to amend the 2022 budget for Edgewater Haven Maintenance Function for the purpose of funding the capital purchase necessary to replace the compressor on the failed 500-wing air conditioner. Fiscal note, to transfer $9,487 from available balance in contingency to the Edgewater Haven Maintenance Function. At the time of this request, the funds available in contingency are $587,500. The adjustment to the budget totals $9,487.
I have a motion by Fisher and a second by Clendenning. Fisher and Clendenning, is there any discussion on the resolution? Any discussion? Again, I would ask you to please Supervisor Zerflue?
Aye.
Thank you, Supervisor Zerflue. And that resolution also passes unanimously, 19-0. Moving forward on page 45 of your packet, the minutes of the Wood County Public Safety Committee, their meeting of June 13th, pages 45 through 48. 45 through 48. Beginning on page 49 through 54, 49 through 54 are various humane officer reports. And then, beginning on 55, running through page 75, is the May Monthly Report for the Wood County Sheriff's Department, beginning with their Rescue Squad. Any questions on the Sheriff's Department report? We move to page 76. We have another resolution. This one comes from the Public Safety Committee.
This will be Resolution 22-7-3, to approve the designation of the Wood County Public Safety Access Point. Fiscal note, possible loss of grant dollars if this resolution is not adopted. Hamilton on the motion, second by Lightnum. Any discussion on this resolution?
Any discussion? Again, I'd ask you to please vote. Supervisor Zerflue? And again, that resolution passes 19-0. Moving forward in the packet, on page 77, begins the minutes of the Seat Committee, their meeting from July 6th, 77 through 80, pages 77 through 80. The Golden Sands Resources Conservation Development Council, there are various minutes from their meetings and their specific committee meetings, beginning on 81, and that runs through page 90. 81 through 90. On 91 and 92, Central Wisconsin, or Central Sands Groundwater County Collaborative, their meeting from May 16th, 91 and 92. University Extensions Monthly Update, 93 through 97. 93 through 97. The Citizens Groundwater Group Meeting of June 20th on 98 and 99. Monthly Report from our Land and Water Conservation Department, beginning on page 100, and runs through 106. 100 through 106. Monthly Update from the Planning and Zoning Office, beginning with Director Grunberg, is on 107 through 111. 107 through 111. This is the quietest county board meeting I've ever been to. Officer of the County Clerk, Trent, you want to add anything? No. Page 112, beginning on 112, runs through 115. And then that brings us to page 116, a resolution from the Conservation Education Economic Development Committee. It's 116 with supporting documentation, and the rest of the resolution running through page 120. Trent?
Now I'll say something. This will be Resolution 22-7-4, final resolution regarding unconditional county guarantee of its pro-rata share in a governmental agreement and taxable revenue bond financing for Bug Tussel One LLC project. Fiscal note is none.
I have a motion by LaFontaine, and a second by Wagner. Discussion on the resolution? Any discussion? Any discussion? Supervisor Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, you have been inundated with paperwork on this thing. And I had one supervisor confide in me, and I had to admit that it was right committed by me. The more you read, the more confused you became. But it boils down to a couple of issues. Number one is, do we need the broadband? Yeah, we do. Number two, are we identified against possible loss? And the question is, well, sort of. The answer is, well, sort of. Basically, there are a number of entities involved. There's state money involved, and then there's going to be our money involved, and we're just one of twenty-some-odd counties that will be involved in this thing. The people of Fond du Lac County have, the county board of Fond du Lac County has very bravely taken the lead on this. And they are basically going to be the source or the conduit through which the funds are channeled to this project. If I'm not mistaken, the last estimate on the size of this project was $277 million. That's a big project. And we're basically in it for 11 million. So, $227 million, I'm sorry, not, not.
No.
So, we're, the idea is that we will eventually, in over five, six years or so, as this project takes place, have all the geographic areas of Wood County open for broadband service. And basically, it's a very complicated thing. I can't answer all the questions. I guess there are questions. I'd have to ask our planning department to address them. But right now, my recommendation is, if we want broadband, I think this is a way, this is one of the best ways we can get it. Thank you.
Supervisor Wagner, there is a return on this investment as well, correct?
Yep.
I'm going to talk about that for a second. Forty basis points. Supervisor Roser, did you have a question before or comment? Hand your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just have a question about, if we may possibly be on the hook for 11 million dollars, how come the fiscal note is none? It seems to me that there should be some transparency, that we are being a guarantor for 11 million dollars. How can the fiscal note be none?
Ed, do you want to answer that? Realistically, we have no money out of pocket. I guess that's the short answer. Are you a guarantor? Yes. Is there some risk? Yes. But we are not spending any of our money, so to speak.
Basically, the money that we're paying into is a debt reserve fund. And so, the way the thing is structured, we will eventually get that money back, one way or the other. It's sort of hard to explain how they do that. But if, you saw that packet that came out, and the answer is buried somewhere in there. I just can't tell you exactly where.
What page?
I can't put my fingers on it. So, yeah, but it is supposed to be revenue neutral or expenditure neutral or the other. So that's, as Lance explained.
It's passed through financing, where we have a guarantee and collateral, to some extent, and we have a 40 basis point.
The other interesting thing about it is, you know, we've got, we have a limit on how much money we can borrow. Now, for us, we still have some 200 million left in our ability to borrow. But this doesn't count against it by the rules. So that's, so we do have to report it when we do our rating letters for our normal bond issues for CIP or those kind of things. We will have to say, there is this contingency liability hanging out there for 11 million dollars, and we have to explain that. But it doesn't count against, it doesn't subtract from the 200 and some odd million that we've got available to us to borrow for the projects, or for the jail or anything like that. Does that help?
Yes. My question is, is everybody comfortable, or would you like Jason to explain further the process? Supervisor Lightnum?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm in favor of this resolution, but I feel with the amount of money that's involved, that somebody should be asking this question. So, on page 114, numbers six and 10, here is the statement. We have, this is from Corals and Brady, "We have not done an analysis as to the assets, financial strength, or capital available." And in one of them, six said with Bug Tussel, and 10 says with Hillwood, his parent company. I just, I thought I could ask that question. Thank you.
Jason, do you want to come up to microphone, bring your team up with you from Bug Tussle, if you'd like to explain this in detail? I don't assume I'm going to have any objection from the board.
Right. So in regards to...
Got all these tall guys. We need to move the microphone up.
Okay. So I guess in regards to Corals and Brady's comments, their role in the process here is really just look at the legal instruments that are used as part of this package, and make sure that they're all correct, and if they had it, what has made this happen? They really had it come out, and we didn't really ask it to come out, and state if this was a good investment, or a good, a good deal for Wood County. Their job is basically look at the documents, make sure they met all legal requirements for Wood County to be a part of this kind of bond. I guess, if I could back up here in regards to fiscal note, that's a little bit tricky, because this is, we're basically a cosigner on this kind of bonding. You know, you could put the fiscal note as a potential loss that the county could assume, or you could put it as potential revenue the county could gain off of this. I mean, it depends on how this project goes. I think right now, talking with numerous committees and board members, I think there's a good comfort level working with Bug Tussle. I think lots do, based on past projects with them in Wood County, as well as the past projects of other counties with Wood County. The state also does have a good level of security of Public Service Commission, working with Bug Tussle. They've worked them about $20 million just last grant cycle. So, there's a pretty strong comfort level there. I'm not sure if I answered the question, but I've got two proud bases there.
We'll open this up. Does anybody have any questions? Do I have Jason up there? Or Jason, do you want to refer? Does anybody else get free?
I do have Mitchell St. Paul as well. He's their legal counsel, and he's our chief development officer. He's been working with Wood County, and many other counties are part of this.
I know this was explained at length to the various committees, all of those. So if there's no other questions, no other questions? All right. Then I'd ask you to please vote. Supervisor Zerflue?
Aye.
It's thinking. The blue circle of death is going around and around. There it goes.
That resolution passed 19-0 unanimously. Thank you. Didn't want to get too much involved in the conversation, but this is something, and I'm not supposed to, but this is something that really is needed in Wood County. If we're going to, you know, be at the forefront of business development, education, telemed, and some of those others, it's something that we have to have. And this is the least risky way to do this. They're assuming the vast majority of the risk from a collateral standpoint, if I look at it that way. Just the towers we have already have on site, the elements that are being erected in some of those places, besides the fiber that's going in the ground, probably much more than covers that from a collateral standpoint. All right. Moving forward, I have two resolutions in regard to zoning map amendments. Anybody have any objections to us taking these together? One's from Saratoga, one's from Grand Rapids. Trent?
This will be Resolution 22-7-5, approve the zoning amendment to the town of Saratoga official zoning map. Fiscal note is none. On page 125, Resolution 22-7-6, approve a zoning amendment to the town of Grand Rapids official zoning map. Fiscal note is none.
Motion by Hamilton, second by Clendenning. Any discussion? Any discussion? Again, please vote. Supervisor Zerflue?
Aye.
Again, that resolution passes 19-0. Moving forward in the packet, minutes of the Judicial Legislative Committee, their meeting from July 1st, 129 through 132. 129 through 132. Update from the Child Support Agency, Director of Rulings on 133. Monthly Letter comments from Core Counsel on 134 and 135. From the Register of Deeds Office on 136. Victim Witness on 137. And then that brings us to another resolution on page 138.
This will be Resolution 22-7-7, to provide for anticipated revenue from the Wisconsin Department of Justice, Division of Law Enforcement Services, to finance the development and implementation of a comprehensive plan to reduce the risk of overdose death and enhance treatment and recovery service engagement among the pretrial and posttrial populations leaving the Wood County jail. Fiscal note, the costs to be funded in the 2022 budget are in professional services other. The adjustment to the budget totals $75,000.
Again, I have a motion by Hamilton, a second by Lightnum. Any discussion on the resolution? Any discussion? Please vote. Supervisor Zerflue?
Aye.
And that resolution passes 19-0. Moving forward, page 139, Minutes of the Highway Infrastructure Recreation Committee, their meeting from June 21st on 139. Their minutes from July 7th on 140, 141, and 142. The monthly letter comments from the Highway Commissioner, beginning on 143, and those run through 147. The monthly update from the Park and Forestry Department, beginning on 148, and runs through 155, 148 through 155. The annual report, which we were going to have a special order of business on, but we'll do next month, 156 to 174. 156 to 174. And then that brings me to the resolution on page 175, brought forth by the Highway Infrastructure Recreation Committee.
This will be Resolution 22-7-8, to advance current highway department employees who are required to hold a Class A CDL, not serving an introductory period, who are in grade F, additional steps on the Wood County general pay structure, and move new hires without a Class A CDL, more than one step after the Class A CDL is obtained. Fiscal note, totals
Motion by Bragg, and a second by LaFontaine. Discussion. Supervisor Wagner.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. We took a look at this on the Administrative Committee, and actually, it surprised us a lot. We've spent somewhere in the neighborhood of $90,000 on this most recent wage study and compensation plan. This is completely contrary to the compensation plan, and what we wanted to do with the compensation plan. I think, I can't believe that the committee thought this was a way of handling what they have in retention and hiring. There are other ways to do this, and without doing damage to the whole compensation plan, which is a, I fear, will happen. If this department can do it, any department can do it. And we've spent a lot of time, money, and effort trying to make this work. As far as, I've checked with the HR department, there are currently no vacancies over there in this classification. There's one vacancy for an engineering type of position, but not for the truck drivers, not for the skill levels that are represented in this resolution. We also know that in their last round, that they had adequate number of applications to replace people in this classification, and that they, three of the people that applied were, had CDLs already. You'll remember that just a month or so ago, we approved something for them, a special incentive for them to get people in, who didn't have a CDL, to get a train for a CDL. And yet, we were lucky enough, or fortunate enough, I should say, in our last round of applications, to get people who already had that, not needing the incentives that we put in place. So I think the need for this thing is vague, or if not totally non-existent. And I believe that it would do more damage to the administration of salaries in Wood County, which our HR department and the Administrative Committee are basically charged with protecting. It would do a lot of damage to that, and I am fearful greatly. I am going to vote against this, and I urge my colleagues to join me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And so Supervisor Han, with his hand up. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There were three CDL holders that accepted the job, but two of them back home when they followed up with pay. Well, some of them, we had to train an official driver who didn't have a CDL. But that's, you know, and that's what we see a lot of. In recent years, there's been a significant amount of turnover at the Highway Department. And I, it's been brought to our attention that, you know, the lack of competitive wages is the reason that we're losing so many of these quality truck drivers. And I think we're just at the point where we need to invest in our current experienced drivers, instead of constantly paying and training these new drivers who don't have the skills and they don't have the knowledge that our current workforce has. So in the long run, I think this wage increase will end up saving the county money. And that's why I'll be probably supporting this resolution today. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chairman, Dallas.
Thank you. I'm going to echo everything that Supervisor Wagner has said. I think we spent a lot of money and time investing in our wage study. There are departments who have very real staffing issues, and this isn't one of them right now that we're experiencing, at least to the extent that, say, Alpen Human Services with their nursing issues. So I don't see this as something that we need to address right now. We don't have openings right now. I think that we need to trust the wage study that we did years ago, and if this becomes a problem, then it's something that we can address in the future.
Supervisor Roser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will not be supporting this resolution either. And the reason is, is that I think when a specific department does something like that, it doesn't have the opportunity to look at the big picture, and so the process gets all messed up. And that's why I'm not supporting this. I echo everything that Supervisor Wagner said, but there's a correct way to go about addressing this, and not just kind of going rogue, and being, and doing your own thing in a department. And that's what concerns me, is that this is not the process that we usually follow to set wages. And I just believe in some orderliness and complete vetting, and so I will not be supporting this, just because I think the process does not take into account a big picture perspective. Thank you.
Supervisor Clendenning? Supervisor Clendeney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You're probably not going to believe this, but I'm going to be excited in with the Operations Committee, which I didn't even want to come to this meeting having to do that. But anyway, I kind of agree with what's being said here. Me being a union person, I think this is pay-for-performance type of thing. I think it should be left up to the Operations Committee on how this is done and how we do spend the money on those wages. Unfortunately, I will be also voting in against this. Thank you.
Further discussion? Supervisor Brad.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been on the Work Committee for quite a few years. Worked pretty closely with Roland and Doug before that. We, if we don't pass this resolution and move on, we're going to lose our Highway Department. It's a constant turnover. These guys can go over to the city, and it starts at $7, but more, that's ridiculous. We've got a pretty good department, I think. Need to retain it. And I don't think that we, it shouldn't look by the wage study. It might have been that wage study to be scrapped. It just doesn't work, especially in this department. Totally different thing as to with other departments. Thank you.
I'll get back to Jake for sure. Supervisor, any other discussion? And I'll go back to Jake then. Jake, Supervisor. Han?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As far as the wage study goes, you know, that was a pretty COVID wage study. You know, we're living in a completely different world, especially for CDL drivers. You know, there's places out there that were killed for a, you know, qualified, quality truck driver, right? Luckily, we got a, you know, a pretty full crew of quality, experienced guys, and I think we need to, you know, we need to keep these guys. Thank you.
I'll go back to Supervisor Clendeney, then Wagner. Unless somebody else wants to chime in for the first time yet. Supervisor Clendeney.
Being on the Town Board and knowing municipalities, if this goes through the Highway Department, we'd be having a tough time getting people, look what they give, and they're not union, and this and that. I'm still going against it, because I think it's just a pain reaction down the line to the rest of us in this. Thank you.
And Supervisor Wagner.
Thank you, sir. It may be true that the wage scale was pretty COVID, but there is a process that can be followed to amend, and this is it. This is basically the department taking on all the responsibilities and all the opportunities to themselves, and basically not having it fit into the big picture that Supervisor Rosar was talking about. The other thing I think that gets me about this is the note that they say is sort of revenue neutral. Well, it's really not, because what they're planning on doing, the way they're planning on paying for this, is by raising the formulary by which we charge other entities, like townships and cities and villages, for work that we do for them, which is sort of strange, the counties are the ones that have that ability to do it, and cities don't have the ability to do that type of thing. So in a sense, who's going to pay for it but the towns and villages that we do work for? So I don't know if they've ever been notified that the rates are going to go up during the course of the year. I don't know how they make the arrangements for those, but I'm sure it's going to be a little bit of a surprise to them that they're going to be bearing the cost of the increase. So that's another reason why I think we should vote against this, because I don't think there's been a due process involved in that at all. So thank you for the recognition, sir.
Further discussion? Anybody else want to take a crack at this? Further discussion? Supervisor Bry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I chaired the town board for town in Mersfield for over 30 years, I guess. We hire the county to do quite a few things, and we don't have a problem with the costs going up. We pay our part-time truck driver more than the county starts people on that. As I said before, this needs to be handled separately. It's a total different picture than some of the other departments, I believe. Thank you.
One last chance? All right, I would ask you to please vote.
Supervisor Zerfle.
Aye.
Could be a secret till next month. Okay, well, there goes. And that resolution passes 11-8, 11-8. All right, moving forward. Property Foundation Technology, their meeting of June 21st, page 176. Their meeting of July 5th, pages 177 through 190. 177 through 190. Monthly update from IT, beginning on 180, and it runs through 183. 180, 183. Monthly update from our Facilities Manager, Ruben Van Tassel. For those of you who have wandered around the courthouse, you can see the construction going on up here on the third floor with the additional courtroom, and we're moving forward pretty quickly with the jail. I happened to sit in some of the technical meeting last week. Somebody asked me in the meeting if there's anything I wanted to add or what I wanted to see, and my comment is pretty broad. I said, "I want to make sure we have a jail that nobody gets out of, too." We want to let them out. But these guys were discussing, you know, what color wire goes in, what conduit, and what plate. So I mean, they're down to the real detail, the nitty-gritty here. Ruben, do we have maybe a break-round date in mind right now? I know we're getting close.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As of right now, we're expecting to have all of our bids back the first week of September, and we will need to sort through and qualify bidders. That's going to be a one-to-one process, and it's expected that we will be presenting at the September 24 meeting the results of all the bids, the whole picture of the jail project. At that point, we would be able to move forward, sign, and give contracts, award contracts, qualify bidders that are qualified. So we could break ground the next day, but it's likely it will take a few weeks after that to see contractors arrive, beginning with excavation and demolition near Eon Street and Brown Avenue. So that's a long-winded way of saying September or react to it.
Thank you, Ruben. I know many of you sat through a number of those meetings, but I just want to give a quick update, because obviously, the public sees this as well. Thank you very much. Moving forward, page 185 in your pack, minutes of the Ethics Committee. Minutes of the Ethics Committee. Supervisor Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to move to overturn the recommendation of the Ethics Committee and set forth, as set forth in its June 23, 2022 meeting minutes, and recommend to the County Board Chair that Supervisor Fisher continue to serve on the Health and Human Services Committee while also serving as a foster parent. But at that time, if any voter rises at the committee that deals with foster care, he must abstain from any participation, discussion, and voting on the matter. That's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion. I have a second by Supervisor Clendeney. Do we have any discussion? Discussion on the motion? Supervisor Rosar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Permission to read from, oh, I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong government body. You have to ask for permission to read for anything in the Assembly. So I'm going to read from an email correspondence. And if, with your permission, Mr. Chair, I would like to ask a question of Supervisor from the 5th District, if he would answer that question after my comments. So on May the 16th, the Health and Human Services Committee got an email correspondence from our Corporate Counsel, and I'd like to read from that document. I can get it on my sheet here. Well, sorry. I'm sorry, it kind of didn't disappear, but here we go. So this note was addressed to the Supervisor from the 5th District. That says, "We have discussed that conflicts of interest could arise when a foster care provider is also a member of the Health and Human Services Committee. You," and that refers to the Supervisor from the 5th District, "you have advised that you want to make sure everything is done both legally and ethically, and to be beyond reproach. To that end, you have asked if the matter can be referred to the Wood County Ethics Committee for it to review the situation and determine if there are issues that need to be addressed. As a result, I will be arranging to have the Ethics Committee meet to consider the matter." So with my understanding, after that email, that the Supervisor from the 5th District had asked for this to go to the Ethics Committee. So I would like to ask a question. And when I read that, I thought, oh, these are admirable traits, you know, being above reproach and being legal and ethical. So if the Supervisor from the 5th District would be so kind as to answer, if he had such a response to be above board, can he answer why he's not willing to accept the recommendation of the Ethics Committee if he was the one indeed that asked for it to go to the Ethics Committee and kind of be careful what you ask for, kind of thing? So I'm just asking if that question could be answered, Mr. Chairman.
You can obviously address to the Chair, and I've got, I mean, there's no, can't tell him to answer the question.
Right.
But I think the real issue here is, the Ethics Committee makes recommendations. The Board is the final arbiter of these decisions. So we have an Ethics Committee that makes a recommendation, set it. Person can willingly abide by it or go to the Board, where the Board makes a final determination. So that's the purpose of the Ethics Committee. I don't know, Supervisor Fisher, if you want to answer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'm comfortable answering that question. So it was brought to my attention that someone felt that there was a conflict of interest. Peter Castenholtz, the Corporation Counsel, brought it to my attention. He did recommend that I do it, and I did say, yes, let's go that route. I did use those words. I was surprised when I got to the committee meeting, based on comments that were made by staff, feeling that there was not a conflict, that the vote did go the way that it did. So based on more conversations after that meeting, I was surprised, I was concerned, and it has now come to this Board for action. Thank you.
Anybody else have any discussion? Discussion? Trent, you want to summarize that back, because it wasn't something written in front of anybody? Or Brad?
Motion by Hamilton, seconded by Clendeney, to overturn the recommendation of the Ethics Committee as set forth in its June 23, 2022 meeting minutes, and to recommend to the County Board Chair that Supervisor Fisher continue to serve on the Health and Human Services Committee while also serving as a foster parent, but that at any time a voter rises at the committee that deals with foster care, he must abstain from any participation, discussion, and voting on the matter.
And is there further discussion? Further discussion? Supervisor Han.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I sit on the Ethics Committee, and I disagree with this decision, and I'll be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Supervisor Fisher, I assume you're going to abstain from this vote?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, that's the comment I was going to make. I do plan to abstain from the vote. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Wagner.
Yes, sir. We just got through, just a little over a year ago, in Mersfield, of adopting the policies and procedures for an Ethics Committee that was designed strictly for complaints or requests for an advisory opinion from the Ethics Committee. And basically, the idea was that we had to conform it so that it wasn't so much free lunch. It had the distinct process and procedure. When I read the minutes, I felt that it was lacking any kind of process to arrive at that conclusion. Basically, you were absolutely right. The job of the Ethics Committee, as it pertains to elected officials and appointed officials, is to make a recommendation to the main body, in this case, the County Board. And the County Board is the one that takes the final action. But in their report to the County Board, they should give the reasoning behind the decision they made and show how it was or was not supported by evidence. So for that reason, I'm going to be voting along the lines of the recommendation here that you've made. But I also am telling Supervisor Clendeney that I'm going to ask the Legislative and Judiciary Committee to look at an amendment to the city's, excuse me, the County Board's rules, and establish a more formal procedure for finding a, handling a complaint against an elected official or appointed official, or perhaps how one can ask for an advisory opinion in the case that there's a question as to the evidence. And I intend to do that so that we can have some assurance that there's been due process for everybody involved. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor Wagner. Supervisor Clendeney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So abstaining from this vote, how about anybody else in this County Board that has had foster children or has foster children now? Should they abstain from that vote? Because obviously, that's what the Ethics Committee wants. So abstaining from that?
I don't think that's necessarily appropriate. And I'm saying that because my Corporation Counsel's shaking his head.
I forgot he was here.
Pretty easy read. Is there any further discussion, Supervisor Bucky? And then I'll go Supervisor Bry.
Thank you. You know, being on the, or former, being on the City Council of Mersfield for 22 years, we come up, or we did come up with many things like this, conflicts of interest. And simply done, they do not, like the recommendation is, they abstain from what it pertains to them. I just couldn't believe it when I saw what the Ethics Committee recommended. I'm with Jake on that, and I'm just shocked by that. And I just wonder if there's not something else behind this sometimes. Thank you.
Supervisor Bry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be supporting this resolution, basically because there's a shortage of foster parents. I was a foster parent for some years, and it's not an easy task. And as I say, there's a depth of shortage out there. So I think if anybody is willing to step up and do that, I certainly don't have a problem with it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All right, just so you're clear, so a yes vote is to support the motion. All right, I would ask you then to please, you ready?
Yeah, you want to go to the Board, okay.
I'll go to the Board.
Yep.
I'll ask you to please vote.
Supervisor Zerfle. Supervisor Zerfle.
Aye. Aye.
It's thinking.
That resolution passes 17-1 with one abstention. Thank you. All right, any other questions, comments about the Ethics Committee minutes from June 23rd? The Central Wisconsin State Fair Board of Directors, minutes from May 16th on 187 and 188. The minutes of the Jail Construction and Hack Committee on 189 and 190. That concludes the pack. A couple of quick announcements. The National Association of Counties meetings begins this week. I'll actually be heading out on Thursday. There are some people out there ready. That runs Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. One of the things that all of you might want to take in, because it does involve our parks, and I've mentioned this year in, year out, some of you haven't gone, some haven't. The largest tourism event in Wisconsin Rapids, probably in Wood County. And the largest water ski tournament in the world is held out at Red Sand Beach every year, with somewhere between 15,000 and 20,000 fans in attendance. It's free. You might want to go see how well your Parks Department operates in regard to helping this particular event come off. Tremendous amount of work, it takes a year. Supervisor Clendeney's out there basically all weekend every year. A number of the others, I hate to just point out, you might, Supervisor Fisher, you've been down there. Supervisor Han, you've been down there. Donna, you've been, I know a number of you have been over the years. But you know, you might want to take that opportunity to see how our Parks Department operates when they have an event that size and help with that. I want you to note that next month's County Board meeting is one I want you to note that next month's County Board meeting is one week later. It's August 23rd, August 23rd. And then, is there anything else that needs to come before this board?
Maybe it would be a bad time to bring up that September meeting of the County Board. It won't be the third Tuesday. It'll actually be the Wednesday following, because it'll be at WCA Conference. It moved up a week from previous years. So we're meaning that, not the third Tuesday, it's the Wednesday after. So put that in your calendar.
Anything else? Supervisor Winch, I'm glad to see you upright and here today. Had a little accident the other day. Glad you're doing well. With nothing else to do?
I have a question.
Supervisor Rosar.
Did you say their next meeting's the 23rd?
Correct.
But that's a Tuesday, not a Wednesday.
That's September.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're in the wrong, in the wrong month. Okay, thank you.
I want to say it's like, maybe like the 21st, if my memory is.
Oh, the 21st. It's the 23rd. Next week, next month is the 23rd.
Yeah. Okay, now I'll declare the meeting adjourned. All right, thank you very much. We have a quick update on our funding meeting to follow. Thank you.